Jenny. Okay, good morning, everybody. And good morning. And welcome to the February 23 Board of Selectment meeting. Again, both virtual and in person. It's nice to start seeing a lot more people here, which is good. As always, we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have a motion for the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of February 9, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay. And is there a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of February 9, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. We will go on to the updates. I don't have that many today. So first off, we continue to have an interest in parcels of land that are on the market and not on the market, building up our inventory of open space. We're doing a really good job on that, and our goal is to have more hiking trails than any other town in the state. So that's a couple promising visits in the last few weeks. So we'll, more on that coming up. I know the most famous of all of them is the Rockefeller property, which I think it's been in the papers a few times already. So we'll be updating people on that. Also, in a similar thing, the possibility of a second ice rink, which would really help the Byram situation. I know there, we did a survey that was overwhelmingly supportive of the original mission of flipping it, but we're still looking at some other options, too, that either way, it's going to get done, and we're going to have a nice, brand-new rink for everybody that's been waiting for, really since 1972, when the first one up there, it's just a slab of ice. But we'll, we certainly understand some of the concerns, and we're trying to incorporate all of that. So that's, a second rink would not only, again, help alleviate the strain on ice time, but also would certainly help us with this little discussion over whether, where it goes over in, over in Byram. But more on that, and again, probably in the next few months. On Monday, March 3, at 10 o'clock, we'll be doing a flag raising outside for Red Cross Month, so I hope to see you all out there for that. I'll be participating in a Mural meeting on March 9 in Stamford. Hopefully, it'll be better than the last time in Norwalk, when I got stuck in an elevator and missed the first half hour. On March 13, at 5:30, I'll be at Greenwich High School. As you know, we presented the soccer team and the golf team, who won state championships with certificates and a proclamation. We didn't leave out the football team, it's just that the schedules didn't work out, but they're getting their rings on the 13th, so we figured that would be a good time. We're going to do it, since there's about 80 of them at the high school, I don't know if everybody and their families would fit in downstairs, so we'll, we'll do that on the 13th, and it'll be at 5:30. So mark your calendars, and we'll be honoring them and presenting Coach Morello and his staff with the proclamation. And the parade of champions, where the, all three state champions will be honored, we're going to do that on my birthday, on June 3. So we're hoping to add a couple more. It's a, we're doing the calendar year, so we've got three state champions ready, came close with a few other ones in the last week or two, and still some time to add to that list for the, for the parade route. And lastly, we are going to be discussing Greenwich's participation in a sister city agreement with, I hope I'm saying this right, Izium in the Ukraine. It's a city that's similar to Greenwich in size, and the mayor there and Mayor Klitschko, who you may remember was a heavyweight champion of the world, he's the mayor of Kiev, have offered to meet with us via Zoom to discuss. So as you know, we have a sister city in China, and we have two in Italy, Amora de Santis and Rose in Calabria. So this would be, this would be our, our fourth. So looking forward to that, and that will be coming up in the, in the coming couple of months. With that, I'll turn it over to Lauren for her updates. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks, Fred. Good morning, Janet. Just a couple of things, I know we have a lot on our agenda today. Yesterday, I know many people, I think it was one of the more attended planning and zoning meetings, where we listened to a presentation from Desegregate Connecticut on their latest proposal, Live, Work, Ride. It was a good discussion, I think I see Patrick LaRoe here, and lots of questions about, you know, details, data. So I think that the gentleman from Desegregate walked away with a good perspective on what the good folks of Greenwich would be thinking about if we were, if this was ever going to become a bill. There's no bill yet, it hasn't even had scheduling for a public hearing. And then, right after that meeting, I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board as an advisory member, so we met with our state delegation, our state rep and our three representatives, just to discuss, you know, approaches to how we, as a community, make our voices heard in Hartford. And the state delegation is also going to be hosting an event on Tuesday of next week at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room, again, to get the community's thoughts on how to best represent our community in Hartford and what we're trying to accomplish. Also went to Western Connecticut Council of Government meeting last week, and Janet, you may know this already, but we had a presentation from Sustainable Connecticut, and they're going to be introducing a new level, so they upped the requirements for silver, which is what Greenwich is, and they're going to be introducing a gold, and be looking for things, and some of which we are doing already, energy audits of our municipal buildings, we have the EMAC, Energy Management Advisory Committee, engaging our youth, I think everybody remembers how the youth came to propose a resiliency declaration, and then to plan and prepare for extreme heat. So I imagine Janet will be, as a co-chair of the Sustainable Committee, would be giving us more information on that. I see Vin and Bob in the audience. There's also going to be some training, we, we had a presentation on how to make communities more bike-friendly. So if you haven't been apprised of that, I'll, I'll send you some information, and that's my update.
Thank you, Lauren. Good morning, Janet. Got it on there?
Hold on. There you go. Thank you, Fred. Good morning, and thank you for that, Lauren. Yes, absolutely, we'll be very interested in Sustainable CT's new certification. Currently, Greenwich, our certification is good for three years, and we just had ours, so we're not up for renewal for a little while, but absolutely, we'll be, we'll be keeping on top of that, so thank you. Similarly, I'm going to keep, try to keep the rest of my update short, but substantial, I promise. I begin in my role as our liaison to the Harbor Management Commission. A recent appellate court decision severely undermines the home rule authority of not only the Greenwich Harbor Management Commission, but every harbor management commission in the state. So there's a proposed bill in the State General Assembly, HB 5614, that would revise the Harbor Management Act to clarify and reestablish the commission's authority. The Greenwich Harbor Management Commission supports this bill, and since the Board of Selectment serves as the harbor management authority, it's fitting that we should also support this bill. I've therefore asked Ken Vorsick to draft a letter in support for each of us to consider signing. The General Assembly's Environmental Committee will hold a public meeting on Monday, February 27. So for more information about HB 5614 and Monday's hearing, please go to the Connecticut General Assembly Bulletin webpage. That's quite, quite, quite a mouthful. I was going to say, yeah, just.
Can you repeat that, please?
There you go. Contact, contact us, and we'll make sure that you, you can get to that website, if you're interested. But thank you for your attention to this matter. And then, on behalf of the Greenwich Sustainability Committee, I'm thrilled to request nominations for its newly established sustainability award to be presented in conjunction with the town's Earth Day proclamation. The sustainability award has been created to celebrate Greenwich residents who embody the principles of the committee. Please send nominations to sustainability@grenwichct.org, no later than March 17. For more information about the Greenwich Sustainability Committee, go to, all right, I could say, just go to the town website, but it's some, sometimes it's not so clear. So www.grenwichct.gov/1775.
1775 is enough actually to get you there.
Is that enough?
We can give you a shortcut that'll say sustainability.
Well, I was just going to say, yeah, I mean, the rest is sustainability dash committee, but.
Okay, but what is the number, like, if you got that for your?
1775, the same year that the shot was heard around the world.
Excellent.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. And, yeah, we will certainly be supporting and signing on with that, and thank you for reminding me, I, I did testify on a couple bills for home rule, and the last was the beach access, you may have been reading about, where they're trying to change the fees that we charge people who are non-residents. And I explained that that's something that goes back to the Court Decree of 2001, where the Finance Department got together with Parks and Rec, figured out how much was going towards the maintenance of our beach and, beaches and parks, and went from there, and it hasn't been challenged in 20 years. It's in line with other municipalities, our neighboring towns and cities, but also, the proponent of this admitted that Greenwich, there was about, he thought there was about 15 municipalities that charge more than we do. So we're, we made it clear, it's, we welcome people to our beaches and our parks, but we have a capacity issue, especially at Todd's Point, and there's also a public safety concern, it's only one road going in there. And I mentioned that, you know, on average, there's six to eight Sundays each year in July and August where we have to shut it down because of a capacity level being reached. So, you know, if you're a Greenwich resident and you've planned an outing at the beach, you may get there and you may not be able to go because it's full, and we explained that it's really, it's mainly a public safety issue and a capacity issue there. And the good news is that most of the people testified and agreed with us, including the Parks and Rec Association, I believe. Joe Sisleyon told me they had testified, too. So.
And Fred, I think what makes Greenwich unique is the, the non-residents aren't necessarily coming from parts of Connecticut, they're coming from New York and New Jersey. So I think, I think that's something to point out. It's, so even if something passed, we're not helping the residents of Connecticut, we're helping the residents of New York and New Jersey.
Yes, that, that was a good point, that was pointed out. But where it's, these things are brought back every year, whether it's, you know, the control zoning or, you know, beach access. Again, we're very, very careful about the fees, we want to be fair to our residents, but also to be welcoming and to have that balance, and we've, we've struck it well for the last 22 years. So we'll keep on that, and we'll keep fighting for, for local control and, and local autonomy. With that, we will go to old business, and we have a second read for the MI application for Delavan Avenue at Chestnut and Veterans Way. And Ian Brown is here.
My name's Ian Brown, I'm one of the civil engineers with the Department of Public Works, Engineering Department. Jim Michael couldn't make it today, he is down in Charleston, actually looking at schools with his daughter. So today, going to be bringing up some old business, this is the Delavan Avenue, Chestnut Street, Veterans Way intersection redesign we've been working on. And for a little bit of background for people who may not be as familiar with this project or weren't with, weren't at the meeting two weeks ago, back on July 8 of 2021, the BNA, that's the Byram Neighborhood Association, gave a presentation focused on residents' concerns about traffic and pedestrian safety. They highlighted several locations around the Byram neighborhood, but today, we're going to be focusing on this intersection specifically. We understand that this intersection sees quite a bit of traffic volumes, both by vehicles and pedestrians. The intersection is particularly notable for its high number of crashes, particularly a high number of crashes involving pedestrians. On top of high traffic volumes and moderately high speeds, some of the factors that contribute to these crashes include poor sightlines and limited driver yielding, which I'm sure many of the residents of Byron will remind you of the fact. In order to address these risk factors, we've developed the following plan, and I'll try to be brief, I know it's kind of a full house here, but I do want to highlight specifically bumpouts as a whole. I know it's something that's been talked about a lot, but I kind of want to go into the reasons why the DPW looks at bumpouts. Number one, it reduces the actual crossing distance, the amount of time that residents crossing the street have to spend within the roadway. They also bring pedestrians closer to the travel lane, which improves visibility between drivers and pedestrians at the intersection. Additionally, they allow us to remove, reduce impervious services at this intersection, thus improving stormwater management. They also help to preserve vehicle and pedestrian sightlines by physically preventing cars from parking at the entrance to Chestnut Street and at the entrance to, or to Chestnut Street from Delavan Avenue. They also serve as a traffic calming measure, which is important to slow down traffic. What we tend to see as engineers is when we narrow the roadway, such as we're doing here with the installation of the bumpouts, we find that drivers tend to drive a little bit more slowly. They're trying to preserve their valuables, their valuable vehicles, and by narrowing the roadway, it forces them to drive with a little more care. And it can also signify to drivers that they're entering a pedestrian area. When they see these bright brick, bright red brick crosswalks, it really signifies this as a pedestrian zone, you're entering an intersection, you need to watch out for pedestrians. Crossing distance reductions are the biggest thing we're looking at for the installation of bumpouts. On Delavan Avenue specifically, we're reducing the crossing distance by about 50%, and if you think about that in crossing time, that's 50% time less in the roadway, which is great for pedestrians. The decorative crosswalks, which I touched on briefly, also improve visibility and give drivers something to look for as they're approaching the intersection, so that they know that there is indeed a crosswalk here. It's a little, we find it to be a little bit more visible than the two parallel white lines that we have around town. Additionally, we're going to be looking at two new lights attached to EverSource utility poles, one here and one here. This is just to improve visibility at the intersection, more light, more visibility. And lastly, we're looking at RRFBs, that stands for Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons. These serve as pedestrian-activated, pedestrian-activated crossing signals. They aren't traffic lights, but they do serve to improve visibility of pedestrians who are looking to cross Delavan Avenue, and that will go at each corner of the bumpouts crossing Delavan Avenue. In closing, we, we've met with two additional residents since the last Board of Selectment meeting. We've been according, public, incorporating public feedback as we move, as we proceed through the project, and I've been, I will be updating the plans on the town website as we make changes throughout the duration of this project. And thank you for your time. If you have any questions, now's the time.
Thank you so much, Ian. Lauren?
Thanks, Ian. Has anything changed with the design in the last two weeks, based on any feedback that was provided?
Right. So I know one of the big things for the Byram Veterans Group, which is the building right here, was the lack of, lack of parking and lack of loading space that the bumpouts allow for with this new configuration. So what we have done is provide, I don't want to call it a loading zone, because it's not technically a loading zone, but I'll call it more of a maneuverability area right here, where it's hatched out for no parking, but we'll provide a little bit of additional maneuverability for, you know, larger vehicles that may be pulling in to drop off, to drop off attendees of the Byram Veterans Group building. And otherwise, a lot of it has been minor changes to parking space dimensions, bumpouts to sizing to accommodate vehicle and truck turning movements, which is still being looked into now, because we know that truck traffic on Delavan Avenue is higher than many other places around town, so it's something we definitely want to accommodate for, and as well as emergency vehicles, I think ambulances and fire trucks, we have to accommodate for those vehicle turning movements as well. So those are the biggest changes we've made since the, in the past two weeks.
Thank you.
And thank you, and thanks for, for listening and engaging with the community. I haven't heard anything bad, only supportive statements and comments from people, so I see David's hands up. Anybody else that wants to speak, just let me, I see Vin. David, you're leading off.
Okay.
Just announce yourself when you speak, please.
Hello? Yeah, okay. It's David Wald.
Can you speak to the people?
Speak to you? Okay. Hi. I brought up this issue with the Byram Vets last time, and I was, got the impression that, from Jim Michaels, that he would visit the Byram Vets and talk about it. But anyway, I see the improvement, and I appreciate that, that unloading area here, but most people who are familiar with the Byram Vets know that the main entrance is here, and that is what I requested last time, since we hadn't had a meeting at the Byram Vets. But since then, we had a board meeting, and it was brought up again, the issue of this drop-off for, for the bar downstairs and the entrance here, which is like four steps into the building. And somebody brought up the question about what happens to the two bus stops. There is one bus stop outside of the Byram Vet, and there's one on this side. And looking at some pictures that was printed in, in the newspapers, if the bus stops here and the bus stops here, at the old bus stops, they block the, the traffic completely. So I was hoping that we, we still maintain the bumpouts to protect the pedestrians and the, the school kids here, but maybe bring back that one and, and have this space here for bus stop and drop-off to the Byram Vets. I say, keep maybe the bumpout down here, but there was a concern from the members that we're losing this drop-off space here, and if we're going to drop them off here and wheelchair and walkers to get into the main building, it's, it's almost like parking down here and walking up. And, and I brought up this last time, if we maybe could get a walkway, because people come down, and I, I just don't see how they, how they will be safer walking in the street here to get to the beach or whatever it is, if we could have a cross, a walk pathway here that connects with the, with the sidewalk. Otherwise, somebody said, if you're installing blinking lights, why not have a push button for permanent full stop? And we looked into the, the Connecticut laws, is that if you have a red and green light, it's 100% stop. A blinking light is just pay attention. So if we're going to install blinking lights on the main access here, why not have, for, for the school time, or entering to school and departure from school, have a permanent push button, so that we can stop completely the traffic? And then there was a question, if, if we're doing this, why not do it up on the next one? But thank you.
Thank you, Ian. I know the, before Ian answers you, the request for the two drop-offs or maneuverability areas, the, the concern for Delavan Avenue was always, it's a main road there, and there's not that much room. So I know when you were explaining that, the concern, I know Jim, you know, he circled in on that and focused on that, and getting the Veterans Way one available to you guys. So I do, if I'm not saying anything right, Ian will correct me, but I think it's, because it's on Delavan Avenue, it's, it's, it's kind of tough there, because it's not much room, and it's a major, major artery there.
Fred, no, you're absolutely correct. So the one, the first comment was about loading on Delavan Avenue directly in front of the Byram Veterans Building. That is something that we are aware of, we know that the main entrance is directly off of Delavan Avenue, but as it exists currently, there actually is a no parking zone directly in front of the building, so it's not really something we can account for, because currently, as it exists today, you're not supposed to park there regardless. We understand that there's going to be loading and unloading there, because there's room for it, but we don't want to, we don't want to promote that.
No, we're not parking, nobody's parking there, they're just dropping off grandpa.
Mm-hmm.
And the same with the bus stop. They, they don't park the bus stop?
Yeah.
No, sorry.
Just to make that clear, I don't think anybody parks there permanently. They, they're all members of the club, and, and we have also three tenants in the building. They would park down here if they had to go in and drop off something. Here is purely, when we drop off a member or, or somebody who is visiting the club, they can go right to the staircase and go up, and the same with the bus stop. I'm just wondering, are you moving the bus stops?
The bus stops will not be moved, we're not touching that at all. As far as drop-off and, drop-off and pickup, those follow the same guidelines as, I'd have to look a little bit further into it, but I would imagine that they would follow the same guidelines that a no parking zone would entail. If you have a no parking zone, you would likely not be able to load or unload either, which is why we wanted to make an accommodation for the area down here, which in and of itself is not a loading zone, but is more of a protected maneuverability zone, as I called it earlier. What else? Your second comment, I believe, was about the sidewalk up here. As it exists today, that also is a landscaped area. It's pretty faded, but underneath this green, you can see this is all landscaping, I believe there's a tree right here. We could look into a sidewalk here that connects somehow further up, but that's going to be, that would be a much, much larger project that would involve, you know, the, the trees along this side of the road, as well as the on-street parking. And as it exists today, even if we just did a small segment of sidewalk along this side of the road, it would only connect to an existing landscaped area. I would suggest, if you are looking to come down from Chestnut, down Veterans Way, there is a sidewalk on the other side of Chestnut Street, I would suggest using that and crossing at the new crosswalk, or crossing down at the, crossing in front of Veterans Way and Delavan Avenue right here. But we don't want to, we don't want to create a sidewalk that isn't going to lead to anything, that just creates ADA concerns and maneuverability concerns and that type of thing. And I believe you had a third, a third question, other than, other than this one, these two?
Comes to my mind.
As you have here, the ADA parking, right?
Technically, yes. I could go into that a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how, how much space is there? Can we actually physically get in and get out? If you're coming from here, driving in, can you actually park here without pulling in and then backing in? So if you have, if it's 20 feet or 30 feet or something like that, between the handicap parking and the bumpout?
I believe this striped-out zone is about 20. I believe this striped out zone is about 20 feet wide, 20 feet long. It should accommodate for the maneuverability of a small truck. Is that what, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned about deliveries, and as you say, this is a drop off zone for people and for whatever we need for the club, and if we parked, we have three tenants, I mean, three apartments above the building, they park here. I think one of them has a handicap sticker, so he's entitled to park here. If a delivery truck comes either this way or that way, would he have to drive into the intersection and then back into the space, or is it enough space for a truck?
Well, I know we're spending a lot of time on this, so I kind of want to keep this moving, so I'll stop, I'll stop responding and just address that one comment. I imagine that vehicle maneuverability would be coming from Delavan Avenue, because we wouldn't really suggest them pulling across from the other side of Veterans Way, if you know, if that makes sense. So turn in from Delavan Avenue, take a right, and then maneuver here, make your drop off, and continue down Veterans Avenue, or Veterans Way, excuse me. And, yeah.
Well Ian, thank you so much for all the work that was put into it, and if, oh, and Vin, Vin has, Vin and then Lucy, that's okay, that's okay, I know. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Jenny, there's a hand up too.
Thank you, thank you so much. Oh, I see, okay. Okay, yeah, 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 okay. Well, I might want to point something out, but it doesn't matter, I think everybody's familiar with the intersection anyway, or the area. And so, so I'm in support of this, I have a business in Byram, I've been there for eight years, so I'm very familiar with that, not only do I drive and walk, but I also bicycle through that intersection as well. And I want to point out that, for some people maybe who are not familiar, the only bicycle sharing sign in town is, has been placed coming off of exit two, coming southbound onto Frontage Road there, but it doesn't indicate where you would share a bicycle. Would you, would you share with bicycles going onto the thruway, or would you share with bicycles going onto Mill Street? So my point is that, I would hope that DPW would take a good look and see whether or not it's possible to actually put sharrows all the way along Mill Street. It's additional traffic calming, but it also informs drivers that there may be bicycles also using the road. The point was made that, yes, it is part of the East Coast Greenway now, it's signed as the East Coast Greenway. We have talked about possibly changing the Greenway to go back behind and come around to the beach as an alternative, that would be a wonderful, nice route, but as a transportation route, a bicycle transportation route, this is not going to change, people are going to use Mill Street. So I would hope that the sharrows, which won't have any effect on the bump outs or anything else, it just simply says, share the road with bicycles, and I think that that would be a wise thing to look at. And they can be used on roads that are 35 miles an hour or less, according to MUTCD manual, so this is a good opportunity to actually use sharrows in Greenwich, to see how they work out. Speaking of working out, I'm curious as to whether DPW could actually, and I don't want to stop the project, but do the actual painting of the, where the bump outs are going to go, and do a trial period, so we can see how the buses are going to work, how trucks are going to get through there, because there is, there is concern about that intersection, you know, Chestnut Street has, as you know, a commercial operation at the end of it, and trucks come around there as well. So tough intersection, but if we can, if we can, if it's possible to do the, paint is cheap, to do the painting first, get everybody kind of used to it a little bit, and then, and then finish the project, it might be, might be helpful.
Thank you, Vin. I know we've been talking about sharrows for this coming summer season, so we hope to see some sharrows around the town, and if we can get something there, that would be, as we, I think this is probably 99% done, but I know you're going to do some adjustments, and we'll be willing to vote on this today, but maybe that's one adjustment that we can make there, I think that would be worthwhile. Thank you. Lucy?
Okay, super quick, because you guys have heard enough from me. I just wanted to point out that right about here is New Lebanon School. The neighborhood is bifurcated by train tracks up here, so a lot of kids, anyone who lives north of Delavan, who goes to Western, or, you know, who, I'm sorry, anyone who lives down here who goes to Western, or anyone who lives up here and goes to New Leb, a lot of kids cut through private property back here and come down Chestnut Street and go this way. It's terrifying to see. I also just wanted, you know, no one's going to go all the way around this way, it's just never going to happen, so we've got to think about the school kids in this. I also wanted to make a point about the buses. I know it stops traffic, but that's kind of a good thing here, we want to slow down traffic, we want to make people not want to come through here frankly, because it's, you know, 14,000 people a day or something are driving through here. So to me, the other issue with that is that people tend to cross the street when they get on and off the bus. I have, this is a high school bus stop, I have seen the bus stop, the bus pulls over, cars go around it. It's, you know, regardless of the stop sign being open. So to me, this is a vast improvement, I'm really grateful that you put the funding in the budget last year and that we're moving ahead with it, and thanks a lot.
Thank you, Lucy. Joe?
I just want to thank the DPW for responding. I'm Joe Kuntorski, the chairman of the Byram Neighborhood Association, and I really think it's fantastic that we brought it to this point. My question is, when will it be built? Do you have some kind of schedule figured out to work on it? Again, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, it's all going to depend on the review process, we have to make it through the Board of Selectmen here today, but we also have to make our MI application submission to the Planning and Zoning Department, which is going to take place as soon as we can. There's going to be several review processes involved with that, but in terms of construction, I'm not sure if we have a hard and fast date, I can't really give you anything set in stone, of course, right now, as we're still working through the design and incorporating feedback, but I would hope that, given that the budget has been allocated in the, the funds have been allocated in the budget, we would like to have something done by the late summer, I believe, was the date, late summer, early fall possibly, provided all things go well, that is, including all of our permitting.
It'd be great if it was done before school started.
Mm-hmm.
Joe, I figured by the hell.
Like I said, it's, it's up in the air, depending on our permitting process and approval process, but late summer, early fall is what we're looking at right now.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, we have one last person, whose hands raised, I can't see it that far.
Lauren Taylor.
Lorraine.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, great. My name's Lorraine Taylor, and first of all, I've been in communication by email with Ian Brown about this project, and I have copied my brother Michael Tracy and my sister Melanie Flynn on those communications, but to date, no feedback has been provided by my brother or sister. So I have two comments this morning. First comment is, I own the commercial mixed-use real estate parcel at 302 Delavan Avenue in Byram. I am requesting the Town of Greenwich undertake a survey to gain public opinion about having the commercial space frontage on Delavan Avenue reduced in size to allow increased sidewalk area. I would like to be involved with the survey program and choose the survey tool that is used by a qualified survey vendor. However, the Town of Greenwich must pay all costs connected to the survey program. I believe the proposal is consistent with actions taken in the past with respect to the BNA overseeing a study and making recommendations to the town about properties in Byram. On March 8, 2021, a proposed white ordinance was discussed at the RTM meeting held by Zoom, and taking away the rights and homes of property owners deemed a safety risk to the community. Decisions were made about the town's right to condemn a person's home and property. A provision was suggested to take action against homeowners' property on an emergency basis due to the presence of safety hazardous conditions that impacted the community. As this matter being discussed today concerns safety hazardous conditions connected to 302 Delavan Avenue's sidewalk, road frontage, and building frontage, I request an emergency action taken on my proposal. And I have a second comment, should I move forward with that comment now?
Yes, if you can wrap it up, if you can, Lorraine, if you could wrap it up in the next 30 seconds, that would be terrific.
Sure.
Thank you.
My second comment, in follow-up to the comments of David Wald, who spoke for the Byram Veterans Club as a person who is not a veteran of the US military himself, I would like to confirm how many veterans with a military DD-214 discharge record filed at the Town of Greenwich Clerk's Office are currently actively connected to the Byram Veteran Association in this year, 2023? I myself have a DD-214 discharge card record filed at the Clerk's Office because my home record for wartime service was 302 Delavan Avenue. Thank you.
Lorraine, thank you very much, really appreciate it. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we could entertain a motion here, knowing what the timeline will be with this, and that the, there's still going to be some edits to this, and some adjustments, but I think it's, is that safe to say about 99% there?
Who knows what's going to happen at planning and zoning?
Yeah, as we make it through planning and zoning, I'm sure things will be changed here and there, but I'd like to think that we're about 95, 99% of the way there.
Well, yeah, I think we've heard enough, and I think the community really supports this, and so we'll entertain a motion.
I said that with the utmost fondest. So Lauren Raven, I move that we approve the municipal improvement application for Delavan Avenue at Chestnut and Veterans Way, for submission to the next step in the process, planning and zoning.
And before Janet Stone-McWhiggin seconds that, I just want to say thank you to the Public Works Department for all of the work that's gone into this, for all of your public outreach, you know, so far, all of our, our public comments have been very positive, and we're looking forward to this improvement, so thank you, and I second that motion.
Thank you. Wald's in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, Ian, thanks so much, and thanks to the whole department and to everybody who contributed to this in the public. The second and last item in all business is the GFD's Plan Review Fee Schedule, and we have the chief, and Chris are here.
Chris Pradico, Fire Marshal.
Good morning, Chris.
Hi, so we are proposing a fee schedule for plan review, whenever a commercial building, residential building, three family and above, is proposed to be constructed, construction documents are dropped off to the Building Department and the Fire Marshal's Office for plan review, whether it be sprinkler systems, fire alarm plans, general architectural plans, and this review process takes up a lot of time, and I just wanted to try to shift some of the burden away from the taxpayers. So we're proposing a fee schedule of a half a percent, or $5 per $1,000 of construction value be charged. We are one of the last municipalities in the state to not charge this fee.
Thank you, and it would be to the developer.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, yes. Any questions or comments? I have none myself.
Sorry, I think we were waiting for the appeal process.
No, that was actually going to be for something else, that was for, which we tabled for now, that was for a fine situation.
Okay, got it, all right, thank you, sorry.
I had the same question, all right, thank you for clarifying that.
No, thank, and this is, I think, not only very fair to you, but it's also fair to the taxpayers, and as was mentioned.
A lot of hours from our Fire Marshal Division go into these plan reviews.
Yeah, and as you said, a lot of the developers are surprised to see when they come to town that there is no fee, and the other towns charge it, so it doesn't affect anybody else, it's something that they, they pay, they pay.
And like Chris was saying, it's commercial property, it's not for one and two family houses. So if you're building a house, or addition on your house, it does not apply to you, to a private residence.
Well, thank you, appreciate that, chief and Chris, so is there a motion?
Well, so I'm, I'm a little confused, is this the first read of this then, if it's not related to the appeals process?
No, this is a, this is probably a third read.
Yeah, we decided to table that other part of, the part two part, which we will discuss further.
All right, so, so the appeals process wouldn't appeal?
That was where we were to talk about, similar to like the alarm board, if we go back for re-inspections and stuff like that, and they're not completed, you know, having some sort of thing like that, but we decided just to make these two separate ones now.
Okay, so they're not, they're not related, in other words, the appeals is not, okay, fine. All right.
Do you mind if I just have to put a discussion?
Sure. Assistant Town Attorney, Amman Ahmed.
Doing today is approving the concept that was put forth by the Fire Department and the Fire Marshal's Office. We've worked with the chief and Mr. Pradico to put together a very short ordinance, which is going to be presented to the RTM in March, so just wanted you to be aware of that, that this will come as an ordinance.
Okay, thank you so much for the clarification.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Ahmed. All right.
Okay, so Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the Greenwich Fire Department Plan Review Fee Schedule.
Janet Stone-McWhiggin, I second.
Wald's in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you so much, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate that, and thanks for all the work that went into it. Okay, on to new business, first up is a proposal of a new parking meter rate schedule, and Parking Services Director, Deputy Chief Craig Ray, is not in person, but he's online.
So I will allow him to turn over his video.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, go ahead with your video if you can.
Morning, chief. We see ya.
Okay, great.
How are you?
I'm good, I apologize, I'm unshaven, I'm actually.
Me too.
I'm actually on vacation, but I'm able to attend remotely, so I do appreciate the fact that I can be here.
Well, thank you for taking time out of your vacation.
No worries. Keep it moving along, good morning, everybody, thank you for having me. You have before you a proposal from the Parking Services team, it's regarding a meter rate change. We've been considering ways to improve our management of the limited parking resources in Central Greenwich, and one of the ways in which we're considering optimizing the available parking is to change the meter rates in Central Greenwich. We surmise that the D-change will encourage the dispersal of some of the parking from Greenwich Avenue into the long-term lots. Our proposed meter rates are roughly aligned with our neighbors, you know, each municipality has some unique features, and there's a clear template, which you can overlay, but to put our current features in perspective, Greenwich on-street parking meter rate is $1 per hour, and 75 cents per hour in our surface lots. Our neighbors and nearby communities all have higher rates at their meter slots and garages. You know, one of the areas that we did use for, that we did. in the outer boroughs, in the business districts, in their retail, their neighborhood retail districts, they pay two dollars and a dollar fifty per hour respectively. And a minimum of all metered spots are a dollar twenty-five. Within our proposal, just please note that we have doubled the meter rate for Greenwich Avenue from one dollar to two dollars an hour. This will result in a maximum fee of four dollars for the two-hour parking mandated for Greenwich Avenue. This cost is still low compared to the actual value of convenient parking to the shoppers on Greenwich Avenue. But most of all, the doubling of the cost will not impact the average Greenwich Avenue shopper, but we're hoping it will affect the parking habits of others. Although certainly some of the shoppers want to overstate two-hour time constraints, we know this to be true. Anecdotally, we also know that many meter feeders are employees in the area. The increased cost of meter feeding for the perceived, I'll say perceived incentive on convenience while at work should dissuade the practice. And particularly, again, the Central Greenwich Parking Permit Program that we have in place, there are thirty-six available parking spaces. The cost of that permit is seven hundred and twenty-two dollars a year. That means that a permit fee would recoup the fee in eighteen weeks if they purchased that rather than paying at the meter each day in the long-term parking. Just note that that seven hundred and twenty dollars a year fee is not affected by the proposed rate change. So to our eyes, every spot on the avenue at its peak usage time is precious, and if we shift even half of the available permits from the avenue to the long-term lots, I see this as a win. If the Board accepts our proposal, the Parking Services team is ready to implement that change as soon as April third, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And as always, this is a first read, so we want to get some public input on this, but you and I had a discussion about this, and I thought about it, and, you know, it certainly makes sense, and I never like to see anything go up, things that we have any control over, but this is not going to stop anybody from going down there, and as you said, we really, we have these municipal lots that we love people to, to take a look at, and that would, if that frees up something and addresses the meter feeding, which we're, we're, we've been working on that, and, and thanks to your proposal that we implemented a couple years ago, we've taken, I don't know, a hundred and sixty cars off the avenue, so that's good, that's a daily thing, but there's still more to do, and so maybe if this chips away at it even more, that's, that's great, but I think it's certainly worth a discussion, so we'll see what the next two weeks brings as far as public feedback. Lauren?
Thanks for bringing this forward. I just wanted to clarify, you said there were thirty-six spaces, I think that still available, wasn't it a total of two hundred? To, so to piggyback on what you said, this was something I brought up, I think, during another fee schedule or, you know, discussion on how much it costs. Have you considered increasing the time, you know, the meters start to, need to put money in them? I know particularly towards the bottom of the avenue, even by like eight, eight-thirty, you know, it's pretty full up, so I think that there's demand to park there earlier than nine, and I don't know if it's just an enforcement issue that you don't consider expanding the time that someone has to put money in the meter.
We haven't really addressed that, changing enforcement times has remained pretty consistent. Of course, there's, you know, elements of labor issues, of work hours and times, you know, the turnover of spaces, particularly on the avenue down at the bottom, does occur, although they're used outside of the enforcement hours, there's a turnover there. So people use them, people use the spots in the morning, and they keep moving. We haven't, I, we have not considered changing the enforcement hours.
Thanks.
Janet?
Well, thank you. I'm going to echo Fred and say I'm looking forward to hearing public input, but thank you for all the thought that's gone into this. I also appreciate the timing. Spoiler alert, our next agenda item is looking at outdoor dining, and to me, these, these issues are linked, so, so thank you.
They certainly are. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. We'll circle back in two weeks. Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you very much.
Make sure you shave. Going on, as Janet said, to the second item under new business is the two thousand twenty-three outdoor dining guidelines, and we have our Town Administrator and Chief Operating Officer, Ben Branyon here. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, everyone. Ben Branyon, Town Administrator, Chief Operating Officer. My beard is by design. Couple items in front of you, and we certainly did by design the agenda, we had the parking fee, and before we talked about this item, it absolutely is connected. This is substantially similar to prior-year guidelines, however, I think the most important one to point out, which we did attach the full text, is the last couple of years, we were operating under either special legislation and/or COVID emergencies. P and Z spent the fall, and they've updated their tax amendment to allow the outdoor dining, but there's one major, they essentially aligned the dates, which were, we've talked about in the prior years, but the biggest issue, which I want to lead with, is when you look at the page one of the attachment of their tax amendment, is the total number, it's the very last paragraph A on page three of the document, "The total number of indoor and outdoor seats shall not exceed the total number of seats approved for the site." So for example, if a restaurant is limited to a hundred seats, "The total number of indoor outdoor seats shall not exceed a hundred seats." That was not the rule in prior, so they could maintain, I think particularly last year, there was some COVID rules that limited capacity, but last year, there was no restriction on the number of seats indoor versus outdoor. So essentially, it's a zero-sum game for this year, which is set by P and Z. The important part to remember as well is Board of Selectmen, you're regulating the use of the public parking spaces, but P and Z is the one that regulates the use that can occur in those space, so it's, it's a joint collaboration there. The other item is we just updated one fee, which was changed on page two, we put the table together, just showed you the number of days, just helped standardize that, parking fee per stall, that will change depending on what the Board of Selectmen chooses to do with the fees on the avenue, and we updated the barrier fee per linear foot from fifteen to twenty-five, again, just as we look at our actual cost for mobilization, demobilization of the barriers on the avenue. But happy to answer any questions. This is the first read, and we would hopefully have the second reads on March ninth. I think that's just, I want to make that as an important date in order we can get the word out, get the applications ready, so they can be ready by April.
Thank you, Ben, yes. Time will be of the essence. So just a brief recap, so in two thousand twenty, when we walked in early April or late March, a bunch of us, early in the morning, on the avenue, we talked about something we had talked about in two thousand nineteen, before the pandemic, which is outdoor dining, and we knew the, the big hurdle was going to be parking. Fast forward to March, middle of March, two thousand twenty, a worldwide pandemic, so we walked the avenue, and we thought, if we, I think we may have been the first, one of the first ones to go outdoors with outdoor dining municipalities in the state, and we thought that if we hadn't done that, they, not only they would have been out of business, but the merchants would have followed. So what we did there is we, it was kind of new to us, so we went outdoors, we took parking spaces for anyone who wanted to do it. We didn't charge that first year for anything, not knowing if people were even going to come out at that point. We constructed and deconstructed, you know, the barriers, erected them and deconstructed them. And the next year, we, I think we went to twenty-five percent of revenue, and then the next year, last year, was a hundred percent. Now we, and that may change depending on the fees here, but it's a hundred percent, so we're not, town's not losing anything anymore on the parking stalls, but also, we're trying to recoup the cost that DPW puts into, you know, putting up the barriers and taking them down. And we're not trying to, we're huge fans of outdoor dining, we, that was things that we, we all ran on, and we're very proud of it, and it's, the survey shows it's very popular, and so we want the, every restaurant that wants to do it to continue to do it. It's, it's been a game changer for Greenwich. It's, it's livened up the place, and we, we love it. But, you know, we want to be fair to everybody, but I do get concerned sometimes when we're, you know, we're back to a hundred percent, and now with P and Z saying, you know, one, one-to-one, which is, which is fair, and, and it's still, it's still a good thing, so as Ben said, if there's a hundred-seat capacity indoors and sixty go outside, there's only forty left indoors. Just having that there for the restaurants is a big thing, because sometimes people say, I just want to go there to sit outside, and when the weather's nice, so we don't want them to ever lose that. We don't want to make it cost prohibitive for them either. We don't want to kill a good thing. So I'm very mindful of the fees, and so, you know, crawl before you can walk, so we've been inching our way back to getting it to a hundred percent, but also to, to still be encouraging of these, these restaurants to be able to go outside while making sure the town recoups its money, and that everybody is happy at the end of the day. So just a brief history to where we are today, it's that we're not looking to slam anybody with extra costs, these are just things that we've been doing, you know, we have, if, we can't do this for everybody, right? And so if I'm a merchant, I'm going to say, well, if we were, we're charging for this, I'd get mad, right? Because I'm, I'd have to pay for something, you know, if I had to do it. So we think it's fair, the pandemic, the two thousand twenty era is over, thank God, so we're just bringing this up to date. And so I appreciate the, the work that's going into this, Ben. Thank you. And I know, and then you had a question.
You can go first this time.
So thank you again for all of this work. It obviously, yeah, a lot of effort has gone into this. I have, I'm looking at this with a slightly different lens than my esteemed first selectman here. I, I appreciate that, that outdoor dining is very popular. It's clearly not going to go away, we want to encourage it. At the same time, our parking spaces are very much a limited resource, and we want to make sure that we're allocating the use of those, of those parking spaces fairly. I would say I wonder if we're underpricing, even, even with this increase, I wonder if we're underpricing the, the value of those parking spaces. Because we're only looking at the direct cost to the town, we're not really looking at market value, and I'm wondering if we, we need to somehow approximate what that market value is so that we know what the right allocation is. So, you know, we're, we're looking at outdoor dining, we're looking at parking, and, and yes, the, the businesses that, whose access is somewhat limited because of, because of outdoor dining and because of the lack of parking spaces, I think, you know, we want to be fair to them as well. So I have a couple of questions, and, oh, I also want to point out, this is not a tax, this is a concession. So, you know, that, we need to keep that in our, in the back of our minds as well. So for starters, so I appreciate that the cost to the restaurants this year will go up compared to past years. Again, this is an iterative process, I'm a, I'm a policy wonk, I'd like to see, you know, kind of iteration by iteration, what it does to the demand for outdoor dining seats. But I immediately want to know, do these prices take into account the new meter fees that Deputy Chief Gray just proposed?
Not, not, not yet. It will, this, this would, anything we do with that fee, right, is going to change up it a little bit, the cost.
Correct. I think, just for example, if you go to page two of the table, where we show that's one thousand five ninety-two parking fee per stall, as, as DC Gray mentioned, if the, if the avenue will double, likely that, that number will double, because we use this, we use the enforced current rate today.
All right. So when we, when we have our second read, those rates are going to go up, so when the public is giving us input on this, they should be aware that these rates are not the final rates.
Again.
Anticipating that we, right, anticipate, right. It's, it's the, you know, it's the chicken and egg question, which comes first, but...
I don't want to presume you'll take any action on the parking fees.
Of course, of course. But yeah, I, I mean, I think this is, like I said, I think this is the step in the right direction. I, this is going to be, rates are going to come up before the Board of Selectmen yearly, and so I would be interested in seeing how these increased rates affect, like I said, the restaurant's demand for outdoor dining.
Yeah, it's a good point, and the, with each year, we're getting data, and we're seeing, we've got, and we're collecting it, which is good, so that enables us to adjust these fees each year. Well, again, not making it, you know, outrageous, we still want people to go there, and, you know, nothing is getting cheaper, so, but we're just trying little by little to just get it to where it should be. But thank you for the, for the questions. Lauren?
I have probably similar thoughts as Janet, very concerned about the parking that we lose. That's the feedback that we get from the community time and time and time again, is the number of parking spaces that we lose to allow the outdoor dining. So yes, perhaps we should be looking at value versus, you know, just recouping, you know, what it costs us as a town to have outdoor dining and the, and the barriers. I've also, and maybe this is a DPW question, like the barriers, like our parking spaces are diagonal, but the barriers are squared off, so we actually wind up losing more spots that people aren't sitting in, so I don't even know if, if there's a way to make the barriers on an angle versus, you know, the squared off, maybe there's like a safety thing, who knows? Then from a planning and zoning perspective, other feedback that we get is we're choosing which businesses benefit from being able to go outdoors, so, you know, is there a clothing store that wants to put, you know, a rack outside? So I think that's the other part of the feedback. Is there a way to be fairer to all retail slash restaurants, you know, on Greenwich Avenue, not just, you know, the restaurants? And I really applaud what planning and zoning did with saying if you're, have a hundred seats, that's all you get, you're, they're going to be there in or out, because otherwise, they were getting the benefit of expanding their ability to, you know, sell food and drink, but not necessarily incurring the costs associated with sort of doubling their capacity. So those are some of the things that I'm thinking about and what I've been hearing from the community.
Thank you, Lauren.
In addition to everybody loving to be able to sit outside and eat.
No, I appreciate that. The, some, we've been told over and over again, if somebody wants to put a clothes rack outside, as long as people can get by the sidewalk, they can't block it. We had one merchant who wanted, who was kind of encroaching and making it hard to...
That, that's actually, that's actually not true.
During the sidewalk sales, they do that, but we're, one got, one of the merchants was, well, Pat, you want to, do you want to come up? Thank you. Pat LaRoe is going to clarify everything. We were told, I forgot the merchant's name on the avenue, said that he was told that he can go out, just, he could put something out there, but as long as it doesn't...
We're talking about sidewalk sales, right, you're saying?
Yeah, but like, just like the sidewalk sales, but they don't block the sidewalk. Would somebody, was a merchant told, I think it was last, last summer, that as long, they could stick something out there, as long as it wasn't encroaching on the sidewalk?
That, that would not have been a direction that my office would have given them, so I don't, I'm not sure of the conversation, but let me back up. The, the outdoor dining prior to COVID and everything else was a use on the books since the eighties, and it was on sidewalks, which again was public domain, and it was, there was liability, there was, there was all these insurances and things, there's these checks that were involved with that to make sure that we had access, that there was coverage of the town for liability purposes, and that, that doesn't exist for retail. So if we, if we wanted to do something like that, we would have to come up with a similar type of rubric to, to let those happen. In addition to that, there's compliance issues and, and access and, and widths and things like that on sidewalks that need to be maintained, not just for people, but for safety purposes and whatnot. So, you know, those, that's where it becomes problematic with having too much out on the sidewalk, because it, it does become a health and safety issue.
Now you, and now you jogged my memory, so there was somebody last, I think, August who brought that up, and we were, I think we discussed possibility later on, at some point in the future, of maybe designating a day.
Right.
Right? One or two days a week where they could do that. So yeah, that, that makes sense. But somebody was, somebody before that would, would mention that they were told, not by you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not involved with that discussion, but if you asked me right now, that would have been my answer.
Sure. Okay, no, that makes sense. Maybe that's something we want to visit. Sure. Okay. No, that makes sense. Maybe that's something we want to visit where you have, you know, sidewalk Friday for, you know, four hours, they can go out, where as long as they're not blocking the sidewalk. Something to, for the merchants who want to get out there, I think that would be nice. As long as, again, people can go up, get freely to and from. And also, God forbid, if there's an emergency and for ADA compliance and all that, to make sure that everything is, is checked and dotted. That maybe wouldn't be a bad thing to, to show goodwill, to, to make sure. But, you know, the end of the day, the reason why the restaurants got this right off the bat, if there were no restaurants down there at all, that would severely impact the, the businesses of the merchants. You know, you want your downtown areas to have thriving restaurants. So that's, I say they're, they're a little, that's the only distinction there, I'll say, is if you took, if you took all the merchants off the avenue and just had all restaurants here, it wouldn't be great, but people would still go there to eat. If you took all the restaurants out of there and just had shops, they're going to go other places unless they really needed something. So I want to make that distinction, you know, that it's not totally the same, but I think maybe we can do something to help these merchants, who, the ones that do want to go outside, just to say, hey, it's going to be on a, a Friday or a Saturday for four or five hours, whatever, just as long as everything is taken care of where people can make sure that they can get to and from very safely.
I just, I just want to clarify though, that comes under planning and zoning. That would not come under us. And I just.
We as a town.
Well, I mean.
I kept saying, we as a town.
Okay, we as a town, okay, okay.
Private, private use would be the domain of zoning. As I think it was already spoken here, the, the use of the parking and the, and the public right of way is, is the, is the selectman's purview.
Right. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to support planning and zoning because if people are confused about sidewalk sales, I'll just say, anyone going to the beach on any given day, there's at least six merchants who have items on the sidewalks. I know planning and zoning had asked for more zoning enforcement officers. And that, you know, that might be a related, a related issue.
Enforcement's always a difficult thing. There's never enough bodies. So thank you for the support.
That is true. Thank you. Mary Ho.
Just for the record, there is an ordinance that's been on the books for many years about not allowing merchandise to be placed on the sidewalks. And at some points in the past, before Pat, we had people who actually chased them away because they caused constriction. And now especially with the bump outs, it really would. But my suggestions about parking is that we used to be able to mark the tires. And then you could only stay for two hours. And that did chase away some long-term parkers, especially those who work in the stores, who are defeating their own future by leaving their cars there. I don't know. Pat, do you know if that's still on the books, that they used to mark the tires? Chalk. It was a practice. Exactly. And the other thing is, right in the middle of Central Greenwich, behind the Havemar Building, adjacent to the playground and whatever uses, are 22, I think there are empty parking spaces reserved for imaginary employees of the Havemar Building. And I would love to see those markings removed and even parking meters back there, because there it is, waiting to be used, right in the middle of Greenwich. Thank you. Freddie?
Thank you, Mary. Those are the, so thank you. Those are the spaces, right, where we planted the trees at the, the growth? Okay. Yeah, it's sporadically, I see cars there, but not always. So you're, yeah, okay. Yes, absolutely. Okay. You sure?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Stephanie Milligan, and I'm just her resident. And I love the outdoor dining. We moved to Greenwich from London seven years ago. We love Greenwich, beautiful, beautiful city. I always joke that when I drive through Greenwich, I'm driving through House and Garden, for those who are familiar with that magazine in the UK, just beautiful homes and beautiful gardens. But coming back to the outdoor dining, I think it's a great, great feature. It really brings the whole town alive. The one thing I would love to suggest is actually taking it up one notch in terms of aesthetics. And I think the first step would be pretty easy, and I have some pictures to document it, is to paint the concrete barriers. I was in Georgetown this summer, D.C., visiting colleges with my daughter. And I was walking around and you have that beautiful sense of unity. And also it just makes it look a bit nicer. So I don't think it's utterly expensive to do, I think, as a first step. You know, they had a nice kind of dark gray. I'm not biased on the colors. That would be the first thing. The second thing, and that might be a bit easier to potion, might be something for next year because you will need the budget, is also providing a composite floor. So actually, when you walk down the sidewalk and you're going to step into the restaurant dining area, you are level with the sidewalk. So it makes it for a nicer experience for all of us. It makes it for a nicer experience for any pedestrian walking down. Too many people, you have to step a little bit into that reserved parking area and get out of the way. It makes it easier if you have strollers to go and be able to enjoy your dining experience. And more importantly, it makes it accessible to anyone who is in a wheelchair. So those are just, you know, things I saw in D.C. and I thought would be important to take into account for Greenwich, because it would enhance everyone's experience, both from an aesthetic perspective, but also from a practical perspective.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. I'd love to look at that because that's, it's always nice to have, have somebody come and give testimony and to offer some solutions and ideas. That's great.
So here are the pictures, and I also can port it to you as a demo.
Thank you.
It does, you know, make a difference when you look at it. And that's the composite flooring. I just took pictures when I was walking. They even have flower pots. That may be taking one step too far, but if we keep the angled.
Right.
Parking, we could have nice pots in those corners that are not.
You're actually on to something here, because we, we have talked about what these barriers should look like. And when, every time we say how much it would cost, we're again, at, we're taking a town expense, right, for the barrier, for the benefit of that, that restaurateur. So some of them, we've talked to them, are willing to do something. So we've had things from Paris where they have these floral designs on there. The only thing zoning told us, like they didn't like, was no advertising, right? We don't want that. And, and we, none of us are in favor of that. But this is actually really nice. And if you have any of those, Stephanie, do you have anything, a photo where the step up, you said, to make it even for? Oh, do I see? Oh, I don't see.
So from sidewalk onto the dining platform. So that gives you a sense. So only here, then you get off it at the end. I mean, that's a slightly different setup than what we have here, because obviously we have the barrier all around.
And so we, thank you so much. And in 2020, so what Stephanie's shown is there'd be like wooden planks there. The issue we, we were told back in 2020 is some municipalities had these, and then the restaurants and the food was going through the cracks. And you know what that was bringing? So the four, our four-legged little friend. So that's why they didn't do that. Now, maybe there's something else we can do that doesn't have that, those spaces there, which makes it easier to clean. So that would, that would be a great idea. But I think Lauren runs the Reimagined Greenwich Committee. And we've talked about this and, and, you know, we want to be very encouraging to, to our restaurants and anybody who has these barriers to, to make them look a little nicer, because it, it could, and, you know, the flower.
Yeah, I love the flower. And it's at the angle too, so we wouldn't lose as many spots.
So we've talked, because the RTM rejected the nearly $3 million grant to do the bump out at Arch Street. And now we are now going to be forced to, to make it ADA compliant. We're going to have to spend the money ourselves now. We've talked about how, you know, to maybe putting these things here, the, the concrete barriers with flowers in them, that would slow cars down. I think it looks nice. It's not, as long as they're kept nice and whether, whether it's a dark gray or a green or something like that. There's plenty of things we can do now. And I think this summer, we should start to implement some of them. Again, we can't pay for the barriers for the individual businesses, but we can encourage them to do that.
While she's doing that, I can say that the Sustainability Committee would like to see planters filled with native pollinators.
And I think to address the cost, obviously you're mentioning that if the cost of parking goes up, the cost to the restaurant of actually having to secure those spaces also going to go up. So in a certain way, to make them want to apply for that and provide outdoor dining, you could say, well, we're going to provide that, that flooring. So I think it's, it's going to be maybe a compromise between the two. But if you're going to make it more expensive for restaurants to have that platform, then you maybe need to also give a little bit from, or we as a town need to give a little bit from our end to make it work. So you kind of, you know, move everything up in both directions.
Thank you. Yeah, it is, it's definitely a concern, throwing too many charges at them. We want, we want this to succeed and to continue for people to enjoy. I know there's a couple of restaurants, they spoke to last summer, that can do this on their own and will do something. I don't know about all of them, but certainly if you, to your point about getting something uniform, and so it looks consistent, as something, you know, like Nantucket-ish, like everything's gray. But a nice gray, Yankee gray. Susan?
Stephanie, thank you, because what you said was what I, I just want to echo what you said. I, I, I love outdoor dining too, but I don't think what it looks like comes up to Greenwich standards in any way. And I spent some time in San Francisco, and they have a lot of hills and too. But you never sat at a table outside where your chin was at the table level. Every surface was level. So I, I love all your ideas. The other thing is, I really, Fred, we need another zoning enforcement officer. And I urge you to put it into the budget for next year, I guess. It's too late for now. But with all these restaurants in violation that knew the law. I mean, this is just one small area where zoning enforcement officers need it on a regular basis, right? It can't be done just once during the summer. But anyway, that's it. Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thanks. Ken, you know me, Susan Foster.
Well, well taken. Thanks, Susan. We have a hand raised?
Hi, folks.
Good morning.
Susan Foster said it for me. About two years running that we've asked for more enforcement capability. P and Z are only, and most times it's come out of the budget. I, we understand that there are a lot of other priorities, but it is desperately needed in more than one area. One only thought that we had on how to address is we are going to have to, if someone is in violation, we are going to have to cancel their permit because some of the violations are life safety. And it has to, we have to have some way of controlling it. So just once again pitching, if you all are looking for enforcement, we could use some support so we could be perhaps a little gentler about it and have the opportunity to remind people of other violations. Oh, there's Patrick. Second thing is Mary Ho mentioned the chalking of the tires. I don't know if anybody's here from GPD, but just quickly, what I remember happened is it is illegal, it is a trespass of private property or something like that. And GPD had to stop doing it. So just those two comments. Ben is listening. Ben, more money, zoning enforcement.
It's convenient. If, sorry, Mr. Leckman, if I could just have one point.
Absolutely.
This is not a pitch for more staffing, but I do want to talk about enforcement. So we, the commission made an emphasis when we adopted a new regulation that we were going to target it this year and make a strong presence known about compliance. In the past, as Bennett alluded to, it, it was, there was no occupancy. It was only access was the limiting factor with those outdoor spaces. So we, we now have, it's going to be easier for us to enforce. And it's also going to be a lot more controlled, because people aren't going to be enticed or induced to squeeze things into those outdoor nodes if, if the nodes get approved. So those are positive things. As Margarita mentioned, we, we are, it is an annual renewal for the outdoor dining. And with that said, restaurants who are new to Greenwich or have never received zoning approval will have to get that this year. So it won't be granted to everybody who had a node during the pandemic or during the, the Senate bill period last year. So just FYI, we're in the process of alerting everybody of that. But that, so if you didn't get a zoning approval prior to 2020, you most likely didn't get one and need one this, this spring. So come call us if you haven't already, but we will be letting everyone know, especially the merchants, that that's going to be necessary. So there may be a little bit of reduction. There's definitely going to be a reduction in the occupancy, because obviously that number is going to be lower. There's going to be some attrition. Some people are not going to want to pay the fee or not going to be, wanted to be limited by the, the occupancy requirements. So in some ways, this will be a little bit scaled back. But again, I do agree that there is an absolute benefit to having this type of activity. It brings people downtown, people actually physically downtown, doing business. And then the tangential benefits of that are obvious. We've just found our traffic studies down there and our parking studies, we're at saturation levels at Saturday afternoons, which is huge, which means that people on their leisure time are coming downtown and doing activities. It's not just lunchtime and dinner on weeknights. So we are a very successful downtown. And I just want to let everybody remember that, that it's not people, you know, we get the Yogi Bearism all the time, right? Nobody goes there anymore. It's too crowded. But that is, that is actually a, a success story and not so much a, a problem. It's, it's something we need to manage, and we're all working to do that. But it's not, it's not a problem that's, it's, it's a good problem to have, is what I'd like to say, so.
It certainly is. And thank you for, for what you're doing and your efforts here and fairness and, and to make sure that our town, our downtown remains vibrant. But these, these are some really good ideas. And we'll, we'll, we'll circle back on this, Margarita, in August when we start preparing the budget for next year. And you have a couple of months to lobby us, especially Ben. Sure. Sure. Yeah. If we can keep, whoever is next, Ms. Volcoin. State your name and if you can keep your comments to two minutes or below, that would be great. Thank you.
No problem. This is Christina Volcoin. Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. I would like to address the Board of Selectmen and the community present just to let you know that I and others are completely opposed to the continuation of outdoor dining in the Greenwich Avenue roadway. What started as an extraordinary accommodation during COVID seems to be turning into a permanent fixture. And I really don't understand why we're not discussing the fundamental question of whether it's wise or just to have restaurants who are paying their rent to their landlords having space in our public right of way, which we need to navigate driving and parking on the avenue. And we're talking about, in a round number, approaching 25% of our direct avenue parking spaces that are taken away annually for the better part of the year for this outdoor dining. And, you know, some of us taxpaying residents of Greenwich demand that the roadway and parking be returned to their intended and proper use. Elderly disabled people and parents and young children especially want and need parking directly in front of the businesses that they patronize. Not to mention, this is New England. This is not the Riviera. We don't have perfect weather for outdoor dining much of the year. We also have a great problem with rats that are attracted to the food dropped in the road and on the sidewalks. And they're in our town center and adjacent residential neighborhoods. You know, we really have to stop extending what was a special accommodation during COVID to a permanent fixture of our town.
Okay.
We need our, our important revenue base open and available for use. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is, I can't see it.
Hi, Margot O'Brien. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. I am the daughter of Diane Garrett. Terrific. I am the daughter of Diane Garrett, Diane's book of Greenwich. I have been here before when the bump out first happened. I, I'm just very upset if I hear no mention of the merchants. There is also anecdotal evidence that is not evident. Without the restaurant, the stores would cease to exist. I utterly disagree with that. Without parking, Diane's books would cease to exist. And again, there seems to be a preference of restaurants over stores. There doesn't seem to be any mention of retailers. How we're going to make up for these 25% of taken away parking spaces, nothing. I just feel like as a retailer on or off of Greenwich Avenue, there is, it's just like, just, it's going to be okay. It isn't okay. Especially where Diane's is, there are many, many restaurants. All of our customers want to do exactly that, shop and go. They do not want to park somewhere far away and they will not frequent our stores. It is very, very problematic. And I think instead of just saying this is what we are going to do, there should have been a debate and a question and a reaching out to merchants. And, you know, instead of anecdotal evidence, real evidence of how it's affecting merchants and what are we going to do for merchants to restore these parking seats? There seems to be no plan, even though we've been doing this since 2020.
Thank you. Thank you, Margot. I just want to make a correction to the, to your stats and the previous speaker. It's not 25%, it's only 15% has been displaced. And as we mentioned earlier, we have been speaking about the merchants. We have been, we've taken 164 meter feeders off the avenue and directed them to municipal lots at a discount to open up spaces. So when you say there hasn't been anything done since 2020, that's not correct. We're actually chipping away at a problem that's been here probably about 70 years. So we're opening up the avenue, but yes, this did take 15% of it. But this is, you know, I, we're going to, we're going to have to agree to disagree here on the benefits of outdoor dining. But we continue to try and not only provide more parking, but, you know, in this 164 spaces, but also we have some bigger plans. Where it's going to cost a lot of money, but right near where you are, we're looking at some, there were plans, I think from 20 years ago about parking that could go into the grade where the Board of Education building is, which would be a lot of money. But we have to have plans. And so we're actively talking about that now in addition to creating spaces. I think we did four 15-minute spaces a year and a half ago for just what the previous speaker mentioned, where people have to go in and out. That's the hardest thing to do is to provide those in and out spaces because people, some people just can't, are not able to walk distances. So we want to, those are critical, but those are also the hardest ones to come by. So it is a trade-off. There's no doubt about it. But that's why we have, we've had public input. We've had public forums on Zoom, and we'll continue to do outreach to people and get their feedback. So thanks to both of you for your comments and to Margarita.
We have Wendy. We have one more.
And we have one more. Wendy, you have the floor?
Hi. State your first last name. My name is Wendy Force, and I am, I own a building on Greenwich Avenue that has a restaurant. And maybe I'm wrong, but from what I understand, the number of parking spaces you are allowed depends on this footage that you have along Greenwich Avenue. My building has, you know, it's short footage, but it goes way back. And here's my suggestion, because I see there are a lot of restaurants down the bottom of Greenwich Avenue that probably are small, one in mine, but have a larger footprint on Greenwich Avenue, so they get more parking spaces. To make it fair for everybody, why not limit the parking spaces to two per restaurant? So it makes it more equitable and more reasonable for, you know, restaurants who have a small footage on Greenwich Avenue and may even have more seats inside than some of the restaurants in the lower part of the avenue that have, you know, they probably aren't square footage-wise as big, but they have a long footage on, you know, on the sidewalk on Greenwich Avenue. So that's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. We'll pass that along. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else that has? Sure. Margaret, for a second time, you're recognized?
Yes.
And then Ben Branion to wrap up.
I'll just be brief. Something we've requested for a very long time is that the spaces behind Diane's book be allotted to two-hour parking or one-hour parking so that our customers can park there. That lot is not useful to us because the commuters park there all day long. And I know that there's some long-term plans, but this be a short-term solution that would work. And we implore the Town of Greenwich to implement that. Thank you.
That's right behind your, right behind your store.
Yeah, there's like four spots.
Yes. And you mentioned, there was two? She's asking for two, I think.
No, they're to limit it to two, to one hour parking or two.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, limit the time people can park there because they're parking, they're considering it a long-term lot.
Okay, I misunderstood. Okay, thank you, Margaret. Ben?
Just to wrap up, we heard the feedback. We'll come back to the next meeting with some responses. We have looked at the platform issue in the past. Just, it's not, it's not a, something we can't overcome. However, just to remind everyone, Greenwich Avenue is on a grade. It slopes down. Every municipality I've been to, I always look at the outdoor dining just because it is what it is doing. Traditionally flat. So Greenwich Avenue just has just another obstacle. And also even more you, we don't want to impact stormwater flow as well. So those are just some issues that we do consider. And I think it is important to point out that when P and Z passed their tax amendment on page four of the PDF, item number B clearly says outdoor dining shall be capable of accommodating disabled patrons in accordance with all applicable laws. So we're placing the ADA burden on the restaurants. So the transition from sidewalk, from the curb, that's currently on the restaurants' responsibility to ensure that it's accessible. But we understand the concern. Just wanted to point that out. We'll have more answers going forward and we'll look into some of the other issues. But I wanted to point out the ADA issue.
Okay, thank you. And if there's some of them that's not in compliance, we need to know so we can go out there and talk to them. So thank you, Ben. I appreciate it. And we'll circle back in two weeks. Thank you. Okay, going on to the Board of Selectmen review of the ADA grievance from Alan Gunsberg and Steph Cowie, who are here, and Assistant Town Attorney Amina Ahmed.
Where are you? I'll just put it here. If that's okay. First Selectman Camillo, Selectwoman Raven, and Selectperson Stone McGuigan. Good morning. I'm Steph Cowie. Alan Gunsberg and I are here today because we filed an ADA complaint regarding the cessation of the municipal improvement at Arch and Grig Streets. The municipal improvement included necessary safety upgrades and modifications to the sidewalks, curb cuts, and accessible parking stalls to bring them up to the ADA code. But after almost a year of time spent in committees planning zoning meetings and public comment, the RTM voted to stop this project from moving forward. Their unfortunate decision was a $2.7 million loss of a grant to do this work. And now the town will need to fund this project completely. Because of that decision has concerned longtime residents of Greenwich, we filed our complaint. We requested that the ADA upgrades be designed and implemented quickly as possible at Arch and Grig Streets. In our complaint, we also requested that the Town of Greenwich shares the DPW ADA Transition Plan on the Town of Greenwich website. In response to our complaint, the DPW ADA Transition Plan was shared with us, as well as the timeline on design and remediation at Arch and Grig Streets will be at 12 to 24 months. Unfortunately, waiting two more years is far too long for the necessary and federal legal obligations by the Town of Greenwich to be met. We ask for what is reasonable remediation in less than 12 months. The town's DPW Transition Plan, which should be available to every resident on the town's website, was written 30 years after it was required by the law. It is now 33 years after the passage of the ADA. And at the pace the transition plan has for remediation, the Town of Greenwich will not be compliant with the federal law even 50 years after the law's passage. And we are only discussing DPW's risk. How long will it take our Parks and Recreation Department to be compliant, our school buildings? We will soon find out as these departments develop their ADA Transition Plans, now nearly 33 years later. One of major concerns of noncompliant of the ADA Title II is risk. Risk of penalties and lawsuits by individuals in the federal government. Therefore, we would like to see more money being set aside each and every year for ADA compliance. This should be a line item specific to every department. We would like people to think of our streets, our parks, our town facilities are open to all, that they are inclusive, like our town pool, Boundless Playground, and Cardinal Stadium. Finally, we have had a First Selectmen Advisory Committee for people with disabilities for over 10 years. This is an ad hoc committee. We have no budget. We have no power, and we serve at the pleasure of the First Selectmen. There are other towns in Fairfield County that have decided that the disabled residents within their town need more support. We believe there's an absolute need in the Town of Greenwich for a commission on people with disabilities, similar to our neighbors in Westport and Ridgefield. We thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Alan, do you want to say anything?
You know, ADA rights are civil rights, and my civil rights have been obliterated by a vote. And when you look at this, we all paid, everybody in this room who's a resident paid for this DPW Transition Plan. And the fact that it's not on the website is criminal. We need to have an ADA Transition Plan for every single department. That's what the law said 33 years ago. You know, we didn't have, when I came here over 10 years ago with a small committee, before we built the selectmen's committee, we had somebody come down from Hartford to meet with us, and he couldn't toilet in the bathroom downstairs because it wasn't accessible. We didn't have an accessible bathroom in this town hall until about 10 years ago. This is, how do you say this to citizens in this town or residents in this town who live here, who have parents here, who have children here, who have disabilities? We don't care. We don't care. That's what we're saying. We disregarded everything, and we don't care. So this is just, you know, these upgrades on the avenue, you know, the safety upgrades are gone. So maybe it might not be safe enough. And while we're talking about parking, there were 10 more parking spaces in that program.
Accessible parking spaces.
Right, some were accessible, some were not. Even then, there were 10 more spaces. They're gone.
Well, you know how I feel about that vote. So unfortunately, that the nearly $3 million now is being taken by other municipalities. And now we're going to have to pay for it, so it's.
But we should fix what we decided was not ADA compliant. Those are, those are the federal regulations. And, you know, I know recently we've seen that Parks and Recs have decided to work with the Department of Justice about our marinas. And it's not just the marinas. You know that too. Go watch them put somebody on the ferry in a wheelchair. Go watch them do that and see if your heart stays inside you. I showed you the video.
It's brutal.
This is, we don't care, is what we're saying. We just don't care.
And I saw the 12 to 24-month period, so I will reach out. I know Jim's away right now, but I will reach out to him and see how we could speed that up.
And we do want to state, we have completely, we are talking as personal as citizens, right? This is not the First Selectmen's complaint, the Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities. But we do want to say, we've had tremendous relationships with the Town of Greenwich and DPW. They've done nothing but try to make it right, and we thank them for their partnership because we do really believe that, and we thank all of you as well. We know this isn't just your decision. This is, we are a volunteer organization in this town of government, and we see it at its best, and sometimes we don't see it at its best. So we do appreciate it.
Well said. Thank you. Appreciate all that you do.
But I really, I want to go back to the idea of why we don't, why we decided that we didn't want to put this ADA Transition Plan on our website. You know why they told me they didn't want to put it? Risk. There's a risk, and there's a risk in not being compliant. There's a big risk in not being compliant. And so if the risk of people seeing this 150-page document and understanding how much is wrong, how much does not comply, how much doesn't reach that low level of, oh, we're compliant. It turns my stomach, and we're hiding it. But if anybody wants it, you can call me. I can email it to you.
Okay, I will talk with Amy today.
It's not, it's not Amy. It's the Law Department. It's not Amy that doesn't want to have that on the website.
No, I'm saying, but as far as the 12 to 24-month period, we may have to do something else as far as, you know, the budget's done for this year, but we'll have some conversations. And certainly, I think your idea about maybe looking at an overall, you know, we're making a lot of progress and thanks to our departments, but we're not there yet. And so I think maybe a more comprehensive view of all the departments, and maybe that's something we can sit down in the coming weeks and months and figure out just more of a thorough blueprint for the town. Because I know with everything we're doing now, we're playing ketchup from years and years of not.
Of not complying.
Right. It's not, we understand it isn't big.
Yeah, but no, but this is very helpful, and your advocacy is huge. So thank you.
Yes, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, as always. Amina?
Almost. Good afternoon.
Four more minutes.
Good morning. This is Amina Ahmad from the Law Department. Since this is an appeal under our ADA policy, I wanted to address some of the procedural issues. I'm not here to speak on the merits of the appeal itself. That's your decision and your call. So our ADA policy does have some timeframes that we need to comply with. And the ADA policy says that once you have this type of a hearing or a meeting after an appeal is filed, that you have 15 days to provide a written decision on the appeal. So that brings us to March 9. And as you can see, Jim Michael was unable to attend today, and Commissioner Nelson, who wrote the decision after the appeal was first brought to her, was not able to attend either. So again, this is your call if you wish to speak with Ms. Nelson and Mr. Michael before making a decision one way or the other as to how you wish to write your decision. You know, you could certainly, I think, extend the time, but we would need consent from Mr. Gunsberg and Ms. Cowie to do that. But there is a 15-day period written into our policy, so I wanted you to be aware of that because there is an obligation under the policy for the Board of Selectmen to issue a written decision. But of course, if there is agreement that perhaps that timeframe could be extended out by a few days, then we can certainly do that. And I understand your next meeting is March 9, which is day 15. So just wanted to bring you back to the procedural issue that is there. Yes.
Thanks for the clarification.
We're okay with that. As long as you need, as long as it's not, you know, 33 years, we're okay with it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, we'll be back in touch.
So perhaps this could go on your March 9 calendar, and we could get Mr. Michael and Commissioner Nelson to address any questions you may have, and then we can craft a decision for you.
I appreciate it. Yeah, well, things are going in my head, some ideas now, so, but I won't verbalize them. But yes, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Amina. Okay, next up is the update on distributors and the Jansen National Opioid Settlements with Assistant Town Attorney Valerie Mays Keeney.
Good afternoon, First Selectman Camillo and members of the board. Great to see you today. I'm here on this update about the nationwide opioid litigation. And my requested item actually has two components, one action item, which is to ask the board to vote on the town's. participation in some new settlements with certain pharmaceutical companies and also pharmacies, pharmacy chains, and I'll give you the details. But the agenda's not clear on that action item, so at the outset, I would ask that the board please vote that the item of the town's participation in the new 2022 settlements be considered part of the agenda for today.
Okay, that is time-sensitive, so.
Right. So if you could just vote on that right now, and then I'll proceed with my hopefully short update.
Which, and you'll come back to that part of it.
Yes, I will.
So the wording of that would be, how do you want us to word the motion here?
It seems like that you want us to vote on the new 2023 settlements as part of our 2022 discussion.
Yes, vote on the town's participation in the new national opioid settlements with Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. The twenty-two settlements. Great, is there a second for that vote?
There we go. Janet Stone-McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camilla's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWhiggin, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Some background on these items. These are nationwide settlements to resolve all opioids litigation brought by states and local political subdivisions against a variety of entities who are manufacturers, distributors, pharmaceutical chains of opioids. And the idea is that these monies paid by these companies will be paid and used, paid to participating towns and states for permitted opioid remediation uses. So those are the components. The town, as a participating entity, releases the companies from any known claims, and in exchange, the town receives money as negotiated by the state of Connecticut, and then spends the money for certain permitted opioid remediation uses. In 2021, nationwide settlements were reached to resolve all of this kind of opioids litigation against certain distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen distributors, and manufacturer Janson Pharmaceuticals and its parent company Johnson &amp; Johnson. This board in December 2021 voted to participate in that settlement, and the gist of the update is that we now have some monies flowing into the town. The administrators for those particular settlements are Demetria Nelson, the Commissioner of Human Services, and Mr. Tyler Faraburn, who I believe is with us today.
Right in front of you. He's hiding in plain sight.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Faraburn, who have developed a proposed plan for the spending of monies that the town already has in fiscal year 2024 and/or 2025. In addition, certain monies have come in under the Janson Agreement, and the proposed plan for those monies also will be spent. Now let's get to the 2022 agreements. In 2022, certain agreements were announced with three pharmacy chains, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart, and two additional manufacturers, Allergan and Teva. So there are lots of names for those entities, but those are the names that we're going to use for purposes of this. I can give you the full name if you like. These companies will be paying millions, billions of dollars over certain year-range periods. At this point, the town has been given notice to participate in these new settlements. And again, those components are, the town would participate by filing a notice, would be releasing any known claims, and then the monies would flow in after certain precedent steps are taken in connection with the settlements by the state of Connecticut, the courts, et cetera. So it's the same kind of process as 2021, and indeed, the list of permitted uses are the same. So that is why I am requesting, it was important to the board also in December 2021 to know that the rights and claims of private citizens are not released at all by the town's participating. I've checked the agreements, it's the same in these agreements. Those claims of private individuals remain and are unaffected by the town's participation. So with that, Mr. Faraburn may have certain answers to questions that you may have, but I would ask for a vote, and I have prepared a resolution. Which I can give you.
Thank you so much.
At this point, I would ask the board to vote on that resolution that the town would participate in these new 2022 settlements with Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walmart, and Walgreen as provided in that resolution.
Okay, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve and have the town of Greenwich be authorized to participate in the nationwide opioid settlements to resolve all opioid litigation brought by states and political subdivisions, including the state of Connecticut, against two manufacturers, Teva and Allergan, and three primary pharmacy chains, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart, including releasing said entities of any known claims against said entities in accordance with the permitted opioid remediation uses and other terms of the settlement agreements with said entities.
Janet Stone-McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camilla's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Valerie, appreciate that. Okay, the last item under New Business is a request for endorsement of Reconstruction of the Selectmen's Bicycle Task Force, and we have Bob D'Angelo and Vin DiMarco here, and Stephanie Martin, maybe virtually?
Thanks, Tony. No, Stephanie Martin, hopefully that's her. I'm not sure, but that's good.
I'm asking her, Stephanie, if you see the invitation, please accept it to be the old journalist, as far as Stephanie, where was it? Is there a chance she might have stepped away?
Yeah, okay. She knows what it's about, and hopefully she'll come back to us. So Vin DiMarco, I believe you have the agenda item, and may have read at least the beginning of it to say what it's about. I would hope that on the second read, all the people that were here at the beginning would be here, because what we're asking for is a big change. In a nutshell, we're asking for the town to make a commitment to not just talk about bicycle access, but to talk about all micro-mobility access. This is a serious safety issue that the Bicycle Task Force recognized from the beginning, and we've been talking about it for numerous months, and we don't see that Bicycle Task Force, as it was originally constituted, would get us where we need to be as a town. So what we're asking basically is to allow the task force to become an active transportation task force, which encompasses bicycles, micro-mobility on wheelchairs, or, you know, all pedestrian, all human-powered transportation, which is a right. We're all talking about parking on Greenwich Avenue and all of that. I mean, we're all basing everything on the use of the automobile, and it's not good for health, it's not good for economy, it's not good for a lot of things. So many other towns have made a commitment, and we're asking to come forward with a proposal for a charter change, or an ordinance, or something that would actually codify that town's commitment towards active transportation and accessibility. So this is the first read, as you know, hopefully there will be some discussion, hopefully there are people listening that would say, "Wait, wait, wait, what are you doing? I'm not going to be able to drive my car to Greenwich Avenue." No, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is, it seems crazy to me that people wouldn't support Diane's books. They have to drive a car to be able to take a couple of books away. Come on. We totally support the kinds of things that are going on, the way the Avenue, Greenwich Avenue Central Business District is changing. Support that. We need, absolutely need to have ADA accessibility, we need parking spaces for handicapped people on Greenwich Avenue, service vehicles to be able to service Greenwich Avenue. But to think that we have to, every person, able-bodied person, needs to drive an automobile to Greenwich Avenue to dine or to shop and park in front of those places is just ludicrous. I just, it's just crazy. So we're asking that we become a task force that concentrates on active transportation, allow us to come forward with a proposal for some sort of a charter change to make a commitment. And Bob, if you want to say a few things, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Just real quick, I think this is the right transition. We've been talking about a concept called Complete Streets, which a lot of municipalities have adopted. It's really, really a progressive thinking where anytime a town municipality thinks of, you know, development, redevelopment, build a bridge, do this, do that, you know, there's basically a checkbox that says, you know, where does micro-mobility or access for all, you know, users, whether it's bicycles, pedestrians, adaptive people that need that help, basically. So I think this is a step, you know, in the right direction. We're focused on child safety here. There's a lot of schools here that are very, very conducive to bike riding, instead of, you know, driving a half a mile or a mile to school in a drop-off line with the motor on, it's bad for the environment. These kids should be riding their bikes to school, so we've been running a lot of clinics. We have a bike-bus concept that was started in Barcelona, Spain, where at Riverside School, it works really well. The other strong thing is, for kids, kids are struggling, they really are, and all young kids yearn for independence. Bicycling is right up there. It's a beautiful thing for independence for kids, it can help with some of the problems that kids are facing these days. Lastly, Chestnut Alley, it's a strip of grass between near Gopher Ice Cream from Stanwyck Road, where the gas stations are, down to Valleywood Road. It's got a little, it's got a little strip in it here. I have a friend, Tate Marks, she's an adaptive bike rider, some of you may know her, she works at the Whole Foods. She and her mom, they walk there every day. Her tricycle bike, she's an adult, barely fits on that. We have a great opportunity to lay out our first, you know, a good segment of multipurpose trail that many, many users would use, that would link the community. It's going to be used when they start the Route Run Bridge construction project, because nobody will be able to get to Greenwich High School. Gets a lot of use now, but that could be our first rollout of some real bicycle infrastructure for the town of Greenwich. So, yeah, we look forward to continue to do good work here, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bob, and thanks, Vin. Just a quick, I have a couple of questions first. The, we formed this task force a year and a half ago, maybe? So I don't, it's not, it's not an ordinance, it's, you know, I'm not aware of it being in the charter, so what you're asking is something new and above, and I'm totally for what you're trying to do here. I just want to make sure what you're asking, we can deliver and do so correctly, but just changing the task force name and direction, but beyond that, I don't know what else we can do as far as, you said, ordinance and charter change.
Well, that's what we're going to look into. See what we can come up with in terms of a proposal.
You want to start with us, though, first.
Well, of course, it's your committee.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea, and I know when you look at something, you see all these real estate listings are going around, and sometimes I read them and I look, and especially down in Florida, when you go down further, they'll have a walkability and a bikeability, and they rate you, and I thought, wow, that's pretty cool, because if you're a hiker, or walker, or biker, you don't want to be where it's zero-zero, right?
Right, and we're down there.
Right, so I think that's actually where society's going anyway, which I think is a very good thing, so I like what you're suggesting here, because suggesting, because I think a lot of people now that are able, want to, want to be able to be more active and do so safely.
And do it safely.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, my question, sorry, was along those lines, too, because, so I'm thinking of it as in my liaison to the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee role. This is a committee of the First Selectmen, so similar to the Disability Committee. I think we have to start thinking about, you know, where do these things have the teeth that, you know, you're looking for, and then the connection, too, because we don't want all these little small things sort of operating. I'm not suggesting that you're operating in silos by any stretch of the imagination, but, you know, can we make the sum of the piece parts equal more, whatever that expression is, two plus two equals five kind of thing? And how do you get sort of folded into a department that you advise and advises you? Like, I think about, you know, the Conservation Commission, you know, they're connected to the Director of Environmental Affairs. Who would you be connected to? Would it be DPW? Because when you change your name to Transportation, does that fall as a municipality under DPW? So I think you need a home, too, within a town department.
Yeah, good point. We put a lot of thought into that as well, and this isn't something new. There was the Transportation Task Force thirty years ago that I was part of, back when telecommuting was really the buzzword, you know, can we get people to telecommute, you know, can we do this, can we do that? None of these concepts are really new. It's just the fact that today, the micro-mobility is becoming huge, and we're not addressing it. There's different factors. People want to be more health-conscious, they want to be able to, you know, be able to move around in a healthier way. There's just so much more awareness of this stuff, and the technology has allowed a lot of these things to happen now. So do we continue to be a town of, where everybody drives an SUV or a Suburban, or do we become a town where a lot of people want to ride a bike, or a scooter, or a hoverboard, or whatever it is, you know, where it's safe enough to do that kind of thing? So I think we need to progress. I mean, the reimagined Greenwich thing, when you're talking about all of these different committees, you know, we put a lot of thought into that as well, that we need to bring all of these committees together and under some kind of an umbrella. Maybe it is conservation, maybe it's environmental, I'm not really sure. And maybe within two weeks, you know, when we get to the second read, we'll have a clearer picture of where this kind of stuff really belongs. To me, and I brought it up in this little write-up here, that it doesn't matter what we come up with, nothing's going to get budgeted. If the BET doesn't actually seed in the operations plans of the departments, the word bicycle doesn't exist, the word trail doesn't exist in any of those operations plans. It's just nuts. We as a town don't, it's not part of our MO.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, you need to, or this needs to be, you know, connected to a department, you know, maybe it's Parks and Rec, you know, because that's trails, bicycle recreation, but it's not going to be in somebody's operating plan or somebody's budget unless it's connected to a department.
Unless they have the responsibility to do something with it, yeah, for sure. So, yeah, it's a little fuzzy right now, but maybe we can actually clear it up a little bit between now and then.
Janet?
Could I help clarify? So thank you for the, all the work that the task force has done. I have attended every meeting, not as a formal liaison, but because I'm a supporter of what you all do. And just to clarify, I don't want to put words in Vin's mouth, but I think when he was talking about charter change, there isn't a need to change the charter. All, I think all you're asking for is the First Selectmen to issue a directive that says, "We're changing the name so that it's more inclusive, we're going to change the composition of the task force." And we've already got, I mean, Jim Michael from DPW already is a liaison to the task force, so I think maybe just to formalize this, because the task force- force, so I think maybe just to formalize this, because the task force hasn't met since before the New Year.
Correct.
Just take a vote, because it, my understanding is it would have to come from the task force asking for this change. Just make, take a vote, present it to us, and then the first selectman can, can make that change. I don't think, it's a first selectman advisory committee, it's not a Board of Selectmen advisory committee, so I think it just comes from the first selectman.
Sure, I get what you're saying, and I agree. The one, the one reason why we really wanted to bring it forward to the Board of Selectmen was to get it out into the public. There's kind of no way to do this, you know?
Yes.
And so the first step, go to the public through the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
Let them chew on it a little bit, you know, respond to it as you have, so that, so the public knows there's something different here, they want to make a change here. And, and so, you know, we didn't know any other way, really, to bring it forward to the public. Sure, there's two other branches of government that are really important here, you know, the financial and obviously the legislative branch, I guess you call it. You know, the RTM can shoot down anything it wants, it seems now. I mean, come from bumpouts, or whatever it is, I mean, but, because there's really no policy in town, and so BET is going to say, what, what are you talking about here? This isn't important. So in the end, it, you know, we lose. So there needs to be some sort of a change somehow. But for what you're saying, Janet, you know, all we're asking is to change the name right now, but also, you know, asking that, what we're asking for as far as a mission and the strategy, the goal, what we want to come up with, what we need to deliver to the public, actually, in the end, is some sort of a vision and a plan to, to change the culture of the town, really, basically.
I couldn't agree more, absolutely. I think you're on the right path. I just want to point out that, that by expanding the scope and the composition of this task force, you can better look at what you're talking about as complete streets policy. And I'll just point out, just to link with what Lauren was mentioning about what was going on in West Cog, Sustainable CT, our certification, by, when the town passes a complete streets policy, that helps us get that certification. So absolutely, this is all, we're all aligning.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I mean, we're totally supportive of this and a name change, we're, you know, if you need a vote from us, we can do that now, and then to allow you to go back to your board, and then maybe we could also circle back with you and find a home, whether it's Environmental Affairs, Parks and Rec, certainly with a hand from Sustainability Committee. I think the more the merrier, but I do think, to Lauren's point, just finding a home, and then we're going to be starting the next budget season, cycle in a few months.
I want to, I want to just plug two people, because you were talking about, well, maybe DPW, or maybe Conservation, but one of them is still sitting here, that's Aljandra Mock there, who's on top of all of this kind of stuff in her department, and Michael Kiselik, who was here earlier, one of our new DPW engineers, who's a cyclist himself, and, you know, he, you know, he understands all of this kind of stuff, and can do something with it. So there's two places maybe where that could happen, maybe there's something that meets in the middle, I don't know, but.
Well, I mean, it's, you don't have to decide today, but I think, you know, put a little timeframe on this, maybe in the next 30 days, we come to some agreement where you'll, you want to be and talk with that department, and align yourself with, you know, entities that can help with this. And then, again, we're going to be starting the budget process cycle in the summer, going over and just, you know, talking preliminary, talking about things, and this would be helpful to actually have the departments sit down with us and say, what can we do, what can we actually get done, what can we defend, and what can we advocate for?
Sure, I would hope that would come up as a budget item in Ben's new committee, the operations thing that you get together every month and, on a high level, and just talk about.
It will now.
Yeah, good, appreciate that.
Yeah, and good suggestion for it being part of Alex's team, so you were sitting right in plain sight to me, and the Conservation was just an example, I was just saying how we have a commission and how they align to an actual, you know, town entity or a town department. And that was why I was thinking of, like, ordinance or charters, because a lot of our boards, commissions, and committees are defined within the charter. So that's where my head was going at when you were saying charter, like, that, you know, we define it as a committee that has a relationship to a town department.
Not, not to belabor this, but the boards and commissions, those are state-enabled by state legislation. These advisory committees are, are bodies that come from the Office of the First Selectman or the Board of Selectmen. So I just want to, we want to make that distinction, and I would, I would hate to put work on someone's plate without their input. I think, as it stands, as a first selectman or a Board of Selectmen task force, I think, I think that's sufficient. What we might want to do is, what you, what you might want to do is just find a cosponsor, for instance, the Sustainability Committee, I co-chair it with Beth Evans, who is our Director of Environmental Affairs. And that way, you know, it's not under Environmental Affairs, but we're, we're linked, we're, you know, and, yes, exactly, intrinsically linked. I would suggest maybe doing the same thing for the, for the bike task force. Keep it, keep it under either the first selectman or Board of Selectmen, but find, like I said, find a partner, partnering department who could co-chair.
Well, I think, thanks, Janet, I think that's something you could bring back to the task force. Throw these ideas around that you've heard here, and what you're thinking, and then, you know, we'll talk, and, you know, we could talk offline, too, and then come back and share what we're, where we're going, but as far as the name change and the direction.
Can we, would you, would you be comfortable making the name change now so that we, we can, because, because really, practically speaking, I didn't want to schedule any meetings to continue the Bicycle Task Force the way it was, and I wanted to make the change so that we could, we could then schedule meetings and bring everybody together to make these sorts of decisions. So if you want to, you know, vote on that now, I mean, it's up to you.
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we, we change the, that we reconstitute the first selectmen's bicycle task force to be the first selectmen's active transportation task force, with the mission and vision, strategy, and goal as presented.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Save the best for last.
We'll keep on this. Thank you. Thanks, I like the direction. Okay. Public comment? Any public comments?
I don't see any, right?
Well, no, that's okay, so we're good there, we have one in person. And it's Peter.
Hello.
Hello, Peter.
Peter Alexander, a lifetime resident, 40th year of licensed landscape architect. I'm here for five or six reasons, but I promise it'll be really short, okay? One is, I would like to acknowledge the good efforts and intentions that we've had about the environment, especially going back to, today could be called Salk Day, because when I was a child, we were spraying DDT almost every day and ripping out as many of the salt marshes as we possibly could. That resulted in the banning of DDT worldwide through Rachel Carson's book. I won't get into whether it was the right thing to do, but I'm very optimistic about the new technology we have, especially to use the silt that we've accomplished by paving, piping, and polluting. And luckily, a lot of it's really easy to reuse now with the modern technology. And I feel fairly strongly that one of the things that I believe in is either serendipity or timing. It was 13 years ago that we, I did the original Barren River Park system, that, just a few days ago, we realized that the IDA effect had made the small area that is about a third the size, the width of this room, accumulated, and it drains 25 square miles of the town and some of Westchester, to the point where it's only four inches on average where high tide is. Now, the anadromous and diadromous fish populations are nowhere now, especially when that's blocked. I was working with the DEEP, we showed that the end of Caroline Pond is tidal by a couple of inches. And what I'd like you to do is take a look at the two pages I gave you, Selectmen, which is asking for you to say, it's okay for me to talk directly to the DEEP about a short, as in, three-day maximum excavation, one bucket wide, by a machine that can walk its way into the water and then pass the material on. So if you feel no obligation to the town except a dollar to cover me on a liability, professional liability sense. I told you, I'd be quick, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I mean, you can reach out to DEEP.
Oh, I have.
Anytime you want, obviously. As far as doing it on behalf of the town, I'd have to, again, circle back with.
It's all-town property. Use Den Lane, all-town property, and it will help the town avoid serious litigation, because we are blocking the anadromous season, which ends on November, excuse me, March 15th, and really, you can go back in, October 15th, but November at the beginning is where we wouldn't affect those populations. So I guess I'm here not begging for three or four million dollars for each intersection, but one dollar, so that we can go ahead with this.
Okay, we'll circle back with you.
Great.
Thank you, Peter.
I'd like to hear from you before the 13.
You'll hear from me this afternoon, because I don't want to keep you waiting.
It's early afternoon.
Later afternoon. All right, thank you, Peter. Okay, appointments and nominations?
None today.
Okay, with that, thank you, is our motion to adjourn.
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody, thanks, Jenny, thanks, Ken, thanks. God bless you. When is it, are we late already?
Yes.
Let's get going. So say 1:00. 1:00, is that good?
Yeah.
Take big care.